Good afternoon. Welcome to the Glendale Water and Power Commission meeting. Today's date is September 19, 2011. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Jamie?
Present.
Commissioner Armenian?
Present.
Commissioner Dentler?
Here.
Commissioner Yao?
Present.
President Chan?
Present.
Item 2A, approval of the August 1, 2011, meeting minutes?
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Do you have a second? Motion passed. We approve the minutes. Next item, please.
Item 3A, action item, Greener-Glendale Plan for Municipal Operations. Cassandra Pruitt. Glenn Steiger?
I'd like to introduce Cassandra Pruitt, who will give a presentation on the Greener-Glendale Plan, which I think is a wonderful step forward for Glendale and for GWP. GWP has a large piece of the plan, but it's clearly a city of the Glendale Plan, and we're very, very fortunate to have Cassandra present this. Cassandra, although works for Planning, I believe, is funded through GWP block grant funding.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Cassandra Pruitt. I'm a Planning Assistant in the Planning Division, and I've been working closely with Glendale Water and Power and all other departments in the city to develop this Greener-Glendale As Mr. Steiger mentioned, the plan is funded through a grant that Glendale Water and Power got from the Department of Energy, the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. Part of that money was allocated to develop a citywide energy efficiency and conservation plan called the Greener-Glendale Plan. The Community Development Department is ensuring that the city meets state-mandated requirements to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So we partnered with Glendale Water and Power to develop the Greener-Glendale Plan that would address both energy and water conservation and greenhouse gas emissions. Greenhouse gas emissions are the air pollution emissions that are widely believed to be connected to climate change. On November 9, 2010, City Council adopted the United Nations Urban Environmental Accords as a framework for our long-term sustainability efforts. The word "sustainability" just means that we're addressing the economy, the environment, and society in a way that ensures we can sustain ourselves into the future. So the UN Accords address sustainability by looking at seven different topic areas: energy, water, waste, transportation, urban design, urban nature, and environmental health. City Council also adopted a resolution to address sustainability and climate change. So the first thing we did was assess our sustainability status and existing programs, which we did and presented in this promotional brochure. We made this brochure available both online and in printed form. It's available on the website, greenerglendale.org, and we also distributed it at community events and literature stations throughout the city and in the libraries and community service centers. We're developing the Greener-Glendale Plan in two separate standalone documents. One of them addresses internal operations, and one of them will address community activities. By addressing municipal operations in a standalone document, it allows us to inspect those activities that are within our direct operational control. When you look at the overall greenhouse gas emissions, municipal operations accounts for 3% of the entire geographical boundary of the city. So if we just lumped those under the community activities, we wouldn't really be able to inspect our own activities and make policy decisions about that and how we can improve our efforts. Also, the city is a complex municipality. We have our own utility. We have our own landfill, our own police and fire departments, so we want to be able to look at those activities individually. Additionally, we want to highlight our existing sustainability programs and accomplishments. AB 32, the 2006 California Global Warming Solutions Act mandates that cities reduce their greenhouse gas emissions to below 1990 levels, but the city has been implementing sustainability measures since before 1990, so it's important to show these efforts. I'm just going to go over a few examples. As you can see, we've been developing our clean energy portfolio since the 1930s. We implemented facility, energy, and water efficiency upgrades in the 1990s, and we've been continuing those efforts since. We began introducing clean fuel into the fleet in the '70s and encouraging alternative transportation for employees in the '90s. The fleet department is also currently developing a green fleet policy, and to date, 9% of our vehicle fleet is green. Plus, the CNG bus fleet. In the '80s, we installed our landfill gas collection system, and we began using that gas for energy production in the 1990s. We've also consistently increased our recycling rate, and we have a zero-waste plan in the works. The city's also been promoting and encouraging preservation of nature in the city since the 1980s. So as part of this initial inventory phase, we'd conducted a greenhouse gas emissions and water consumption inventory. And we found that due to existing conservation efforts, the city actually reduced its overall energy and water consumption in its facilities between the two years that we inventoried, which was 2004 and 2009. However, the city also increased public services in a few other areas, such as the fleet and by opening the new police building. So overall, the greenhouse gas emissions went up 3%. As you can see, if no action is taken, emissions will continue to increase. The Greener-Glendale Plan proposes that we adopt greenhouse gas emission reduction targets of 8% by 2020 and 13% by 2035. These are feasible targets, and they'll also bring us in line with regional efforts by Southern California Association of Governments. However, if City Council chooses to adopt more ambitious targets, the plan does lay out a variety of programs that we could pursue to meet those targets. Through the city's existing sustainability programs, we will be able to meet 77% of our 2020 reduction target. We'll be able to make the remaining of the 2020 target through programs that would require staff time but not significant additional funding. To meet our 2035 target, the plan lays out a variety of programs that are not funded. We can pursue those programs to meet the 2035 target or to meet a more ambitious target if the City Council chose to adopt that. The plan looks at the seven sustainability topics laid out in the UN Accords, and it shows how implementing measures in those seven topic areas will result in greenhouse gas emission reductions. These are just a few of some of the programs that are either already completed, in the works, or planned and funded. The second document that addresses community activity is in progress. We've completed a greenhouse gas emission and water consumption inventory, and we've conducted a variety of community outreach, including working with an email interest list of 100 people. We conducted a community workshop. We attended a multitude of community events and meetings, and we're currently working with businesses and schools to include their conservation efforts within the plan. A key finding of this process is that the city has a lot of programs and information available that the community likes and would love to see more of. They're really interested in education, outreach, and promotional activities to encourage conservation within the community. The public review for this document is scheduled for December 2011, scheduled to be presented to GWP Commission and Planning Commission in January, and then to City Council in February. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Otherwise, there's a motion attached to the report to recommend adoption to the City Council.
Well, thank you, Ms. Pruitt, for a very informative presentation. I just have a few questions regarding the planned efforts on the previous slide before the next one, the previous one here. The existing plan versus planned efforts, so are you saying that these are the projects that are in the works to meet the 2020 goal?
These are things that are already planned, that I mentioned earlier, that our existing programs will get us to 77% of our 2020 target. These are all within that group of plans, of programs, but there's additional ones not listed on the slide.
But are these the, would you say mandatory versus voluntary? What if there's a budget impact to these projects? Because I know that GWP has a target of 33% renewable energy, so they have to be on track with that. But are there any voluntary projects on this list that could be impacted by potential budget cuts? Or could you prioritize these different projects?
Most of these are considered pretty safe when it comes to the budget. However, some of them could be affected. For example, planting trees. If they decided to cut the budget for trees, we wouldn't be able to plant that many trees by 2020. The HVAC upgrades on 23 buildings, that's completed already. The retiring, underused, and older vehicles, that's already completed, although it's an ongoing effort. Improved water pumping efficiency. I would have to get an update on that one, but I believe they already started that one. Downsizing the vehicles, that was completed, although it's ongoing. Yeah, the brand library remodel could be affected by the budget. Parks Department water efficiency, those were all things that were completed.
So would you say these projects are what are necessary to meet the goal, or are they not? Or can we add other projects that could meet that goal?
These are absolutely necessary to get us to just meeting 77% of our target. We would need to add additional programs to these to be able to meet the 2020 target. Those additional programs are not funded, but they wouldn't require significant additional funding. They would mostly require staff time. So we did prioritize the list in the document. I believe it's page 13 or 14. They're prioritized by feasibility. So these were considered pretty safe as far as being able to complete.
So since the recommendation, I guess, in the motion is to consider the 8% by 2020 and 13% by 2035, are you suggesting that on page, which one you mentioned, that the additional goals or metrics? Because I want to get an idea of what additional recommendations should we proceed with the Council recommendation and how we can facilitate those different projects to be on the list so we can meet more aggressive goals if the City Council were to be interested in those?
I believe it's page 13 to 14. There's a table. Oh, I'm sorry. It's not 13. It's page nine to 10. So on the left, you'll see it shows existing planned efforts, Phase 1. Those are the 77% I talked about. Phase 2 are the additional programs that would require staff time but not significant additional funding. And Phase 3 are unfunded programs that we could pursue to meet more ambitious targets or to reach our 2035 target.
And are there any costs associated with these different projects so that the City Council would know if they need to approve any of these projects, they would allocate budget for it?
Further study would need to be done on that. There is a page that, we had some cost information on a few of these items, but we did not have cost information for most of them. There's a sample table on page 15, but it's very minimal. If the Council decided to pursue additional programs, we would need to do feasibility studies and cost studies on those.
Would you say that the projects on the list from the previous presentation, the slides on the presentation, would you say that those are pretty much no or minimal effort to implement to meet a goal? Because we would want to have a goal where it's attainable just by passing this motion. We want to be able to have a goal where we want to reach, strive towards. But if we can't meet it, then of course we can reevaluate. So should we have a more of a higher target than rather than saying that these are the projects that will be implemented and then will therefore reach our goal?
We feel that we could make the 2020 reduction target. As I mentioned, we consider it feasible, so without significant additional funding. If you, if the Commission decided to recommend to Council to pursue more ambitious targets, it would be, what would be required is to pursue these programs that are not funded.
I mean, I'm leaving up to the Commission, too, because I want to see a higher goal than something that's already attainable by having these projects.
Especially in that, if I heard you correctly, quite a number of these are already completed or almost, so it's, we're, it's, I think you're talking about more of an aspirational set of goals.
There are quite a few of the programs listed on here that are not completed, so it's not like we don't have to do anything and we're going to meet the target. We do have to continue our existing efforts. A lot of the programs that we have in place need to be completed, or they haven't even been started yet. Some of these are planned efforts, but they have not been started.
Actually, I stand corrected. The list on page nine is quite a bit longer than the slide, so especially for people watching at home, you know, when we're sitting up here, we've got a big, long list.
Right. This was just a sample list. I just tried to get a smattering of programs from different areas. But the comprehensive list here doesn't have as many that are completed as were listed on that.
So just to clarify, the long list that we have in front of us is what would need to be completed to meet the target by 2020?
Yes. The number, the letter A with the big arrow, we would need to get all the programs
Up to the A?
Up to that point, which is...
What does B get you?
B is the 2035 target. So for those who don't have this document, the 2020 target, there's about 20 or 30 programs listed there.
Can I ask about the, I'm sorry?
Can I add one more question?
Yes.
So for example, under A, you've got, one of the items was develop two local water wells. Do we know whether or not, I shouldn't use A, do we know whether or not any of what we've currently done already qualifies for that, or would be two additional new water wells?
That's, if I interpret properly, those are the two that we're currently developing now.
That you're currently developing, okay.
Right. The point of organizing it this way was just to give options?
I have a question. All of the energy-related programs, have they been reviewed by Glen and staff?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so they're all either in the works or completed or definitely possible?
Or proposed, yes, correct.
And budgeted for as appropriate?
Not in every case, no, because some of those, many of those actually are public benefits programs, so they get funded on a rolling basis through the public benefits program. But some are, the 33% renewable, for example, that is forecasted out and budgeted for as we move along.
Can I ask a question to clarify the numbers? We have two columns, one for estimated greenhouse gas reduction and one for cumulative greenhouse gas reduction. How can you come up with a cumulative reduction figure for the column on the farthest right for those categories where you can't quantify the estimated?
I just assumed zero for those, even though it's probably not going to be zero. If you look to the right, the number just stays the same through all those programs.
Ah, thank you.
Yeah. So I guess for me, what's unclear is, given the budget situation in the city, if I are a City Council member and I'm getting a recommendation from my Commission, you know, at the end of the day, the City Council is going to have to make decisions based upon budgetary issues on many of these things. So some of them don't require budget, but many of them do. And whether or not they're, so we could sit here as a Commission and say, these are all great ideas, approve. At the end of the day, a City Council is going to have to make the assessment in those cases where budget would be required or there are budget implications, they're going to have to prioritize those and weigh those against other issues that they've got, many of which, I think, would have a very difficult test to meet, given that City Council had to come up with $18 million to close the budget gap. So it's difficult for me as a Commission member to make a judgment, to say, yeah, great ideas, go for it, and then kick the can to the City Council and let them worry about all the budgetary implications when the budgetary implications are actually probably one of the primary factors that would affect whether or not these things can move forward.
One important thing to note is that this is a guidance document. It doesn't mandate the implementation of any one project, so it's just kind of a catalog of things that we could do and kind of gives an idea that we could meet our reduction targets if we pursued these programs. But it's not obligating us to do any certain thing or any certain number of them.
I don't know how much of an effort it would be, but can you possibly recreate this with a column or two saying if some of these items have been budgeted for, they're already in progress, what's completed? To really see what Commissioner Jamie is asking for, I'm sorry, Armenian is asking for, is what is really outstanding from a budgetary perspective and what needs still to be approved or budgeted for. I think that would give us a good idea of, okay, how much of this is really on the way, you know, what's, you know, what's the remaining required to reach the 2020 goal and so on.
To show which programs are vulnerable to budget cuts?
Or, you know, the ones that are going to have the big, that are key but maybe having the most uphill battle from a budgetary perspective? I think it would really shed a lot of light on where you need to focus, where we need to, as a city, need to focus our attention. In other words, if it's an item that has a potential big impact but also big budget that goes with it, then those are the things that you're going to weigh and say, well, I'll focus my dollars there because I'll get the most for it in terms of achieving the goal versus other things that I could allocate funds to but wouldn't get me as much, wouldn't cover as much ground. I think it would help, it would help separate some of these things out from a prioritization perspective. Understanding, of course, that this is a guidance document, I'm just trying to think of what would help City Council, because they're going to have to ultimately look at these same factors. So I think running it through the Commission would, you know, if we can, as a Commission, help City Council in discerning some of these issues, I think it would expedite the actual decision-making when it gets to City Council level. Just my personal opinion.
I would, just from my perspective, I wouldn't mind passing the motion. It's limited. It's a recommendation to adopt the Greener-Glendale Plan, but I think, I agree that the Council is really going to have to grapple with the numbers and come up with the dollars, and they're going to be weighing a lot. They're going to be asking for more science, and I, so I guess, I don't mind signing or passing the motion as it's written today, but it seems to me that a more meaningful motion down the line might provide more clearer advice to the Council. In particular, I'm, if I were on Council, and I know we have a mayor very interested in bike lanes and some of the other Council members are interested in bikes and in some of the other, these other items, they've already talked about it, they've been in the media discussing some of these things, and I guess I would just, I would question why we can't have more quantification on some of these major things. I, I mean, it's not my field, I'm not a planner, so I, it just seems to me that it's not a very meaningful document to put in front of the City Council and say, bike lanes, gosh, that would probably really reduce greenhouse gases, but we have no idea by how much. So it's not, the science isn't, the statistical analysis isn't, doesn't have enough teeth in it to really be, give them much guidance.
We can definitely get more information on the programs that are listed here and the relationship with budget vulnerability. However, this listed program, we worked very closely with whichever department the item relates to to find out from them whether it was feasible regarding, especially regarding funding, if it was already planned for in their funding. So all of these items that are listed through A...
Was that post-budget cuts, when they went through the budget study session, or was it before that?
This was up to and through it, I would say.
Well, I mean, like Commissioner Dentler said, I don't mind passing a general motion, but I guess what I'm saying is both from the quantification of GHG benefit as well as quantification from a financial impact perspective, I think you're going to get those questions at City Council level. So whether you're preparing that for us or whether you're preparing it for them ultimately for actual legislative decisions, I think the work is the work.
Okay.
It's kind of a heads up that I think you're going to get the questions.
We'll get something together to address that issue. Thank you.
But in addition to that, it would be helpful to see the cost per metric tons, because, and then to separate that out between the different projects that are, I would say, mandatory versus voluntary, because the 33% renewable portfolio energy will mandated by the state to meet that target. So even though it costs more per metric ton CO2 reduction, we still have to implement it, whereas if you do a remodel of a building, that might be voluntary depending on budgets. So you can break those out as well, if you can put a cost per ton, and then list which projects are really in the staff or the department's definition as mandatory versus voluntary, that would help the City Council filter through those projects, where if they want to accelerate the goal, then they can say, okay, these projects, we have money now, we can put that forth because it costs less per ton than the other projects.
Those are all great suggestions. So today, I believe we can go ahead and move forward and see if we can move this motion along and then, but provided that you come back and to us and as well to the Council with the information requested.
I guess, Chairman Chan, I have one question, though, with the motion, because it is saying that we're recommending that the City Council adopt the plan. So in essence, you are passing a judgment on the entire contents of the plan, and I guess I have, you know, I would be more inclined to pass a motion that says, you know, for the City Council to consider it, but actually recommending it, meaning, it means that you're, you know, passing a judgment on all these elements. I don't feel like I've got enough information to be making that sort of recommendation. I think it's, I think it's certainly good enough for them to consider, but I think there's going to be a need for more data to be provided to them or us.
But can I ask a clarification question? Is this plan pertinent to anything, or this is just voluntary for a city to adopt rather than it's mandated by the state or the county to, or each city to implement?
The city is required to reduce its greenhouse gas emission reductions, but we're not specifically required to, well, do you want to speak on this?
Laura Stotler, Principal Planner with the Planning Division. We are required to address AB 32 and also be compliant with SB 375. Those are both different plans related to reduction of greenhouse gases. AB 32, that's the reductions that we need to do at a municipal level, and then we also have SB 375, in which we need to be consistent with some of the regional plans that are going on with the Southern California Association of Governments. So the answer is yes, we are required to do or to address greenhouse gas reduction. We also have a grant that requires us to look at energy efficiency and water conservation. So we do need to adopt a plan. However, the specifics of this plan, we don't necessarily need to adopt. There's a variety of flexibility that we do have, and that's why we designed a program that does have a variety of options, specifically because we're aware that the budget right now is uncertain. So we wanted to give ourselves a wide variety of programs so we could identify them and also so potentially we could use them to obtain grants in the future. We have programs identified. We have definitely policies that encourage sustainability and greenhouse gas reduction. That puts us in a good situation so we can apply for other funding when it becomes available. So that's sort of why you see a smorgasbord approach to plans that we might have in terms of actually quantifying greenhouse gas emissions. A lot of that answers, we just don't have the science at this time to do it. We are working on a couple of items. You did mention, for instance, bike lanes. We do know we're working on a bikeway master plan that, when that effort goes through, it might help us quantify at least some of the mileage that we might be looking for in terms of putting in roadway miles of bike lanes. looking for in terms of putting in roadway miles of bike lanes and some other options. But again, those are options and until we have a plan, but when you actually fund them, that may be down the road. So at this point, this is a planning tool for us. We're looking at this as an important planning tool because it's setting the stage for the future. But in terms of actually implementation, a lot of the funding is not certain. And as Cassandra identified, the, the funding that we felt, the programs that we felt a degree of certainty, we added those as the ones that we thought, okay, they're tier A. We felt those are going to happen. But we don't know about the phase two and the phase three. So that's why we, when they're broad and we identify them. In terms of cost, we'll do our best to identify where we have a cost that we can identify with, with an item, we'll add that. But a lot of them, again, are unknown, especially a lot of the ones that we have in planning, things such as green building designs. You know, it's, it's, depends on each project as it comes through. But certainly we can make sure that on a project-by-project level we can start implementing these policies. I don't know if that answers your question.
And are these goals tied to those mandatory states and those different legislative mandates, the 8% by 2020 and 13% by 2035?
Yes, those are, we adopted or we're proposing to adopt exactly the same targets that the Southern California Association of Governments has adopted. They've already been vetted through CARB and they've been working toward that goal on a regional basis. So that's why we felt, we felt that we would be consistent with the regional efforts if we adopted a similar target. It doesn't mean we can't go further, but we felt at least as a minimum, that would be our first goal.
Could I offer then an amendment in light of your answers, which were very helpful to me? Can the motion be amended perhaps to add a comma after the, instead of a period? So it right now ends at a period after the words municipal operations. We could turn the period into a comma and say that we recommend the city council adopt the Greener-Glendale Plan for Municipal Operations, comma, while recognizing that it is a...
Pending, pending further review of...
I, I'm not comfortable with pending because that's almost a conditional adoption of a motion. And I don't, I don't, that doesn't, I don't think that that's the way we should go. But I was going to suggest something along the lines of municipal operations, comma, while recognizing that further analysis will be needed to clarify financial impacts or scientific and financial impacts, something like that, so that at least we have an aspirational policy plan recommended to council, but we signal to council that there are going to be some details that need to be fleshed out.
So I guess that that leads me to a question in terms of what our role is as a commission. If it's just a tertiary analysis and we kind of punt it to city council to do the, the heavy lifting on the details, then that would work. If we view our role as a commission to do a deeper dive and vet it so that city council has a firmer recommendation, because right now, the way, the way the motion is written, which is saying, we recommend everything in here. And it's difficult to recommend everything in here in a detailed way when there's, you know, all these other questions that some of which perhaps can be answered, some of which cannot be answered right away, right? Each, each one probably needs its own analysis to determine the, some of the details. But I think some of the things that Commissioner Jemian mentioned, which are just some initial filters such as already underway or already budgeted for, I mean, those sorts of things could help. But for example, even if you take the number two impact one, which is the plant 3,400 trees by 2020, that's going to cost some money, both staff time and the actual, you know, materials cost as well as the identification of where you would plant 3,400 trees in the city. So, you know, that's the potential, you know, number two biggest CO2 impact item that I think, you know, those are the types of things, analyses you would do, in my opinion, to say, let's focus where we can make the biggest difference and focus our resources, time, research on those things where we think it'll make a huge difference versus other things that might not make as big of a difference. Because, you know, when you get down to the bottom of B, you look at LED streetlights, that's a, that's, there's financial, huge financial impact there if, if we want to go there. So I guess my question to my colleagues on the commission is, how do we view our role of, is it just a general kind of review? Or is it the deeper dive review happens here, then it goes to council?
Well, if you look at the...
Ask one question before you, I'm sorry. How time-sensitive is this for you guys?
Well, we have a limited grant, so it's time-sensitive in terms that we want to accomplish it this year. However, I would leave it up to Director if, what your timing would be, if he wanted to, if, if it takes another month or two, I don't think that will, it will matter one way or the other. I believe we can get a lot of this data that you're requesting within the next couple of months.
My recommendation would be to do just that. Go back, get the information being requested, take a hard look at all the things that are at this point unanswered in here to the extent that you can, and then come back and let's take another look at it. That would be my recommendation, rather than to do something that's a little bit nebulous.
My suggestion as well, that's why I asked the question, because if it's going to be held up at council level anyway for a couple of months, they just do it right now and not point to them. That was my, my recommendation. But if it's time-sensitive, we've got to get this approved now for them to review, then, you know, maybe adopt.
Yeah, my answer, my personal view on what our role is, I think the deeper dives need to happen here because they've got so many other things that they're dealing with on city council level. If this, if a commission isn't going to play that role, then, you know, the value is, diminishes a little bit in my eyes. And so I would view our role as, you know, kind of spending more time on it than, than city council would perhaps. That'd be my personal preference.
I think that I would generally agree with that, except that if we, if we consider our role in light of the municipal code, which is tucked into the front of our binder, so I'm really glad it was there today. The municipal code spells out our powers and duties and our powers and duties are to make recommendations concerning the Glendale Water and Power Department. So just wondering, it seems to me that a lot of us are expressing interest in more details concerning a lot of sustainability strategies on your list that really are not within the purview of either the water side or the power side. So that, you know, bike lanes are really the Transportation Commission. Some of these other things probably are in the purview of some other commission. And in listening to my colleagues talk, I'm wondering whether we really should take much more time, you know, further developing numbers on these topics that aren't really within our purview, within our duties as set out by the municipal code. And maybe are you, is the planning department going from commission to commission and board to board, seeking various commissions' motions? Or is this just a motion to our commission?
We're going to take it to your commission as well as to the Planning Commission. We recognize that these are citywide policies and we felt them, really the heavy lifting is with GWP. And this is really the majority of the, the programs are coming from GWP.
The, the important thing to note here is that the funding is coming from GWP. That's the importance, that's why.
Okay. Even though libraries and parks has their own commissions, transportation...
That's correct. But the funding for this study.
Okay. So it's appropriately within our purview in the view of the general manager?
Correct. I believe it is.
Okay. Then I, then I agree with you. I think we should send it back for more work.
So it would really depend, commissioners, if I may, it would depend, you know, what aspect of it you want to look at. As Mr. Steiger said, Glendale Water and Power is really an integral part of this plan. So I think it is appropriate to do that deeper dive, as Commissioner Armenian was saying. But if the focus would be to be looking at bike plans and so forth, then obviously that would be beyond the scope.
So unless we have two commissioners today who are willing, I mean, to make the motion and move it forward, why don't we just give it another month then? Do we have two? No, right?
I'd suggest then that we entertain an alternate motion to have it brought back with specifics, if there's not a motion as it stands or as amended.
Right. So can we see it again next month? Thank you.
We need to for that, right?
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we review it at the next commission meeting with the additional data that's been requested.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion pass?
All those in favor?
See it again next month.
Let's, let's take over.
Okay. All individually or, okay.
Aye.
Thank you, not to prolong the meeting, but thank you.
Okay. Motion pass. Thanks. Next item, please.
Item 4A, update water rate redesign. Peter Cavunas.
Before Peter gets to the lectern, I'd just like to thank the commission for your diligence and, and thoughts and insights that were expressed during our workshop last week on the water rates and financial future of GWP's water division. I truly appreciate it and sincerely say that. And we continue to appreciate your insights. This is a large issue for us, as you might imagine. And I think from this point, Peter just wanted to review a few things.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Peter Cavunas, Assistant General Manager for Water in GWP. I'm here to give you an update on this issue. Normally would have been Bill Fox, who was our, who was our Chief Financial Officer. As you probably know, Bill, Bill Fox has left the employee of the city. And so there's still a little bit of turmoil as to how the role continues. And it looks like Mr. Bob Elliott from the city's finance office will be taking over that responsibility. So in terms of future updates, it may be me, it may be Bob, it may be other staff that are also involved in this. But for today, you got me. So here you are. Thanks. I echo Mr. Steiger's comments. Thank you very much for participating in what was a delayed start and a lengthy session. It was a session, actually, we're on the 13th last week. We didn't get to everything we wanted to get to. The piece that was left off was actually the impact to the customer. We presented to you the drivers for redesigning rates, the way the new rates were designed, the new design that we came up with, and then importantly, the utilities revenue that we need to raise over time. What we didn't get to show you is from the three alternatives that we recommended, the impacts to the customers. And we actually had the ability, we just flat out ran out of time, had the ability to run the model live. So if you wanted to see one of those scenarios, the gentleman from Willdan were ready to do that and show you on the screen. And if you wanted to see a different scenario, they could run that at the push of a button and show you that as well. So that's something that, that is yet to come. By way of an update, what we're doing now as staff is we're going back and collecting some of the information that was requested. For example, there was some information requested about the breakdown of labor costs versus, you know, management versus non-management, as well as some cost containment measures and a number of other questions that were asked. And we're generating information, in addition to the data, we're generating information that was requested. For example, defining a more well-specified percentage of future borrowing versus future pay-as-you-go for capital projects. I believe that was one of the topics that was discussed. There was a question about what happens if we have more conservation. And so we're looking into that. How does that affect? Of course, that doesn't affect the utilities revenue, but it affects the impact to the customer. We were asked questions about the irrigation rate and the commercial rates being flat and how does that, is that something that enhances conservation? So we're looking into bringing back some more discussion about how that came about and why it makes sense the way it's been suggested. And then there were also, there was also a suggestion for looking at a different alternative, something that would be between the alternative that meets the very basic of business needs and the one that we recommend. So we're looking to analyze that and tell you what it is that, that you'd be giving up if you went that route as opposed to with the recommended. So the plan as it is right now, and it's again being discussed with the city manager, is to go back to city council on Tuesday, October 11th. That's not set in stone, but it's, it's looking fairly probable. And Mr. Steiger can correct me if there's something later than that. And before that, I believe the week before, we have a commission meeting with you, so the information would come back to you, item for the, for the consideration of the commission, Q and A, and, and any other thoughts and considerations. With that, Mr. Steiger, go add beyond that.
Yes, and we've, we've gotten some additional inquiries since that time. Commissioner Dentler, you've provided some thoughtful input. And we will provide responses to all of that, plus some additional information, as Mr. Cavunas has mentioned, at the, the October meeting. What we decided to do, and we thought it made more sense, was to concentrate on bringing you that data so that you could take a look at it. We can discuss it at length here within the confines of the commission meeting and then move forward to the, to the council workshop after that. So that's, that's what our plan is. We expect to have quite a bit of data available next month, different scenarios and so on, and if need be, the use of the model, as Mr. Cavunas said, which we did not get to at the last meeting.
Can I add a few, a few more documents or requests? I think I discussed this either with Walden or somebody, but I wanted to make sure this was also included in that. Can you guys provide a table that shows the impact on the reserves per scenario, including the additional scenario? That way, it's evident to the council, what is really happening to reserves in each given year. So show years one through five and what happens, how quickly the reserves get impacted. I think that'll be important because that's the real concern when it comes to having proper funds. And then second also, can you provide maybe a breakdown of the impact on the customer per customer group? I think it's different per customer group. You guys are showing averages, but the, the impact per customer group and maybe even show a spectrum, you know, what happens on the left, on the right, because it, the impact is very different. And
Yes.
Most people, I think, were concerned about how this impacts the community as it relates to people that were most affected by the economy. I think it might be favorable to show that that group of people may actually either not see big of a change or might see some, some sort of reduction as well.
Actually, you know, that's, that's the part that's the most regrettable, is the model has been programmed to do that. And again, if we had time to show you that, what we have is a, on the bottom right-hand corner of the, of the front page of the model, it's designed to help the utility and the decision-makers understand the impact of the customer. So you have a dropdown menu. You can choose the type of customer, single-family, multifamily, commercial irrigation. And then each time you do that, it shows you the whole spectrum, somebody in that category that uses low amounts of water, medium consumption versus high amounts of water. And it shows you what the, what their bill is with the existing rate structure versus what the bill would be with a proposed revenue increase. That's all in there, as, along with the impact on reserves. That's as well built in. It's in tabular form as well as in graphical form. And when we get to that, you'll appreciate how good the model really is. And it just really helps you understand the impact of the decision.
No, I'm sure it's there. I would, I think that the reserve impact, if it's in one table, so it's very evident. And so people could see the, you know, the same image. I think it'll be, it'll help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next city council session that you're thinking might be October 11th, will that be another joint one with us?
No, we're proposing that it not be.
Okay. And so could we see that model run when we have our own session? That would be great.
Yes. That's, that's what we're proposing to do.
Thanks.
You know, I sent you a note, Mr. Cavunas, afterwards, I couldn't stay for the last two hours, but I did watch it on TV. And there were some good valid discussions and good points being made. But I was, as my email indicated to you, I was a little surprised about the different, the two scenarios, or at least the, the two requests that staff was presenting to the council and the commission, was, one was for the rate design and the other one was for rate increase. And initially, I thought it'd be more palatable if we came in with a rate redesign request rather than a potential rate increase request. Would that still be the case? Or are you still planning to present to city council the rate redesign and the rate increase request?
You know, I, from, I received your comments and I really appreciate, I, I understand we weren't planning to stay much later. And it's understandable, you had, actually commend you for staying as, as long as you did stay. And appreciate you taking the time to put your comments together and send those in afterward. The, the thought to, to change the design first of the rates is a really good thought, but unfortunately, we've missed that both. So our recommendation is going to be to both, change the, the design of the rate structure and increase revenue. Last year, it might have been a really good time to just change the design of the rates. We didn't get to it. So at this point in time, we're finding that the rate, the rate redesign is necessary and the revenue, the revenue increase is also necessary. So from my point of view, why, what I would recommend to Mr. Steiger and to Mr. Starbird is to consider both of those together. Of course, your recommendation, as well as all the questions and recommendation by commission and council, carry a lot of weight. And we, we do consider those in our, in our strategy discussions.
Well, because I'm afraid what was happening during discussion is that the rate increase request gets lost in the mix and we might not get the rate, the water rate redesign at all if it's being held up by this rate increase request.
Well, and that's, we'll try to make sure it doesn't get lost. Actually, if you saw the recommendations, the last few slides, one was, we want a direction is, should we go ahead with the rate redesign as a separate component? And then should we go ahead with which option of revenue increases as a second? And then should we go ahead with a bond as a third? And then do we have a thumbs up or thumbs down on going to monthly billing at some point in the future?
So potentially, the Council could approve the rate redesign and consider the other components at a later date.
That's the do-nothing alternative fundamentally, and that's an alternative that just doesn't fly right now financially.
In fact, it would be, the better option would be to defer the rate redesign at this point and just concentrate on the revenue increase and the bonding. That's the most important piece. So if we were going to truncate them, we would request that the rate redesign be truncated off and then pushed out for reconsideration, maybe next year sometime.
Yeah, because I thought the Commission and the Council were very interested in the rate redesign. As you mentioned, it would have been better last year, but since we missed the boat, if we don't get anything passed, wouldn't the water rate redesign being passed be at least a plus, or wouldn't that be a negative regardless?
Well, from our point of view, if it comes along with no revenue increase, that's a huge negative, and we cannot afford.
Why is that?
Well, that was the do-nothing alternative.
No, I know, but I mean, you're implying that doing a rate design is actually, without an increase, is a negative thing, so why on its own is a rate design not a good thing? I'm not understanding that. I understand the preference.
Yeah.
But let's assume worst-case scenario, why would you at least want, why is a rate design negative on its own?
Well, the rate redesign is not a negative on its own. Rate redesign alone, without revenue increase, is a bad thing. But having the rate redesign is, if it doesn't come with a revenue increase, the revenue increase is essential for the utility.
I understand that part, but I think you're, I find that your statement's a bit contradictory in the sense that you're saying that the rate redesign, you know, is a good thing on its own, as well as obviously better with a, the revenue is obviously needed, sorely needed. But my question is, why wouldn't you, worst-case scenario, at least take the rate design even if you've got nothing else?
It wouldn't hurt to do that, but that wouldn't solve our overall financial problem. But you're right, it wouldn't hurt a thing.
Okay.
Fundamentally, what we presented to Council, and again, the lateness of the hour didn't let us get to what we wanted to do. The rate redesign with the proposed, the recommended scenario actually represents a lower monthly bill to the average customer.
That's what I was going to ask.
And shifts the increases to the higher users. That was presented in a slide by Mr. Steiger, but we didn't have time to really go into it as to why that is and how that actually works. So from my point of view, the rate redesign does help, but it's got to come with revenue.
Well, I thought that with the rate redesign, if we design the new rate structure as a revenue-neutral based on existing rates, and we have multiple tiers, wouldn't that help the low users and at least increase the revenue to the city if water consumption goes up? If people hear that there's no more mandatory reduction and they start using more water, wouldn't the new rate redesign, once in place, be generating more revenue for the city?
Well, we've got to keep a few things, a few things in the right place. Water conservation and water demand is one thing. There's some fundamental assumptions that we've made into creating a budget for the year and driving what our revenue requirements are. That fundamental assumption is that we took the demand from last year, which was the second year of mandatory conservation, and we made the assumption that now that we no longer have mandatory conservation, our demand for this year will go up by 5%. Still going to be, as you recall, mandatory conservation dropped us by between 15% and 20% for two years running. It's not unreasonable to think that the demand will go up a little bit, but not back to where it was. So we assumed a 5% increase in demand, and the model begins with that. What kicks in after that is price elasticity, which says that if the price of water goes up, then demand goes down. And that's an assumption that's made in the model. It's an assumption that can be changed in the model. There's an input box that if we believe, based on data, that it's not the right number, we can change it. But with that assumption, that's driving demand. Demand, to us, translates as sales. So that's got to go into the one side of the equation. The revenue requirement is also a separate consideration. The revenue requirement is driven by sales to some extent, so there's that feedback loop. It's also driven by what we actually need to operate, maintain the utility. And when you divide the two is when you get to rates. So I don't know if that helps explain a little bit of where we're at, but you can't, we've built in the conservation, we've built in demand, we've built in MWD purchase water into what is one complete consideration.
Yeah, I would assume that you keep all the existing assumptions with the built-in increase and then change the rate structure to the new rate redesign if it's approved. And if it's approved independently of any rate increases, then we have that to work with. And once you set that new rate design as a revenue-neutral on what the old rate would be, then if people can use more water, wouldn't that be a natural increase in revenue for the utility?
Well, I think the opposite may happen as well.
Yeah, I was going to say, the reality of it is, because the way the rate redesign is, it punishes people for using more water. So actually, most likely, the opposite will occur.
It's the economic version of mandatory conservation. You're doing it through economics to try and get people to decrease.
You might actually.
And if on the mandatory conservation, which wasn't truly heavily enforced, resulted in the percentage of decreased usage that it did, imagine actual economic incentives and how much that might affect things. I guess I was going to go back to the point of, you know, the dashboard that Weldon presented in one of the scenarios. It's going to be very critical at the next session to jump right into the bottom-right quadrant of that dashboard that they showed, which was the low, medium, high impacts of each scenario, because I think the judgment, the kind of, the rush to judgment, I think, a little bit, just based on the percentage numbers that were averaged, percentage number impacts, right, were affecting people's view of the scenarios. So in the next session, if you could jump right into the model and show, for each scenario, here's the actual impact for low, medium, high, and how that's, might economically incentivize people in terms of who pays more, who pays less, who doesn't get affected really, then that might recalibrate a little bit closer to where you're hoping to be at the joint session.
Plus, it'll be much easier to demonstrate through that model and through those various pieces, all these questions and answers. It's hard to do without that here.
And, you know, just as Councilman Quintero members stated, that he'd be in favor of a 2% versus a 5%, you know, you could kind of play with those and see what the actual financial impacts are, see it live, and that might actually, you know, it would change his mind when he sees what the differences are.
And that's a really good point. Actually, when we presented percents, those had nothing to do with rates. Those were not percent rate.
But that's the way people perceive it, and so when they're perceiving it, I know a lot of conversations I had with various citizens afterwards, with the homeowners' association that I'm on the board of, there's pretty visceral reaction to increases. So I think we need to dispel some of that by showing the actual true picture as accurately as possible, because then people can see where they fit into that scenario and what does that mean? Does it mean 5% for them, or does it mean 1% for them?
I agree, and I sent a similar comment after the meeting. I think that was a really significant problem, that as hard as staff worked on the presentation and the consultants, as much attention, minutes, eyeballs on the whole subject as how many documents we had, how many slides, et cetera. Sometimes, less is more. In the political world, it's important that people, that the decision-makers, especially with the economy that we have right now, be able to cut right to the chase and see the bottom-line impact on actual stakeholders. And that would be, my suggestion would be, a shorter number of slides next time and much, much more transparency about the bottom line, so that there's less room for even unintentional sort of fear-mongering out in the community. I have a procedural question, though, that's just a general comment. Procedurally, are we going to be asked at the next Commission meeting to pass a motion or adopt a recommendation that then will be in front of the City Council when it meets? If so, I'd kind of like to know now. Or will it just be kind of general study session? We ask our questions, you reply to questions that some of us have sent you previously? There's really a big difference for me, and I think that Council had a good point when some of them asked up on their dais, well, what does the Commission recommend? And we are here to provide recommendations, so will we be recommending something next time?
We will ask you to support something. Now, that something will obviously develop at the next meeting, and you may or may not opt to do that. Last time, we had an increase, last year, we came to that same conclusion. It was much less complex, it was quite, you know, obvious, it would be either X or Y. And the Commission did, in fact, support it, and if I recall, Commissioner Armenian, you came to the Council to bring that message forth. We will ask similarly, some type of support and/or recommendation, and it'll be up to you to do it. I mean, it's not an action item, so there won't be a vote per se to say that you're going to, it has to be X or Y, but we will ask for some kind of direction or support.
Well, will you want a motion to come out of our next meeting?
If I may, if we are requesting a recommendation of Council, it would be agendized as an action item, and there could be, certainly there could be options. It could be various options that we intend to present to Council, as well as, you know, an open-ended motion where you could make a recommendation.
If I may, keeping in mind of where we are in the process, what we were asking at the joint study session was an informal nod of, can we go ahead and issue Prop. 18 notice saying that the city has the intent to raise revenue as described in the recommended proposal? We're still at the same place. Now, once we issue the Prop. 18 notice, that sets a maximum of what we could actually do. What we do from there is, we could do as your Commission can actually recommend, between the time the notice comes out and the final hearing, which we'll probably have another two Commission meetings since then, you can recommend either to Council, you can recommend to them adopting staff's recommendation or something else in between. But you'll have a lot more time than next meeting. What we need to do is get the process going, send the notice out, kind of start dialing in on, you know, here's the max that we could do, and, you know, we need to start working out, what are the alternatives between that and something else the Commission? But at this point in time, you know, my recommendation would be, when we come to you next time, is that we walk away with a recommendation from your body to the City Council, go ahead and issue the Prop. 18 notice. It's not really a commitment to do anything other than start the public.
For me, the process would be cleaner and maybe comport with the spirit of the Brown Act, if not actually required by the Brown Act. I would feel most comfortable if we did have an agendized action item as to those notices. I really am concerned by how much time was spent at City Council level debating this trigger of the notices. I don't think that they expressed comfort with that and the way that it came to them that day. And if it's going to be coming back to them, I think it should come first to us, and we should act on, we should actually take formal action recommending issuance of the notices. Although I understood, I got a question answered, I think via the city attorney, that it's not actually required that there be an action item to send those notices. I just think that it would be more palatable and transparent to do it that way.
But I, correct me if I'm wrong, though, by even making that recommendation, the recommendation comes, for 218 notice comes with a recommendation for the amount of increase, correct?
To the maximum.
We couldn't just say, do 218 notice and leave it blank.
Right, it has to have a scenario which becomes a max.
So in essence, you are recommending, by doing, even recommending that, you're recommending a scenario.
No, no, that's not true.
Right?
That's not correct. You're recommending the notice for a scenario that then becomes.
I mean, but a maximum in terms of rate increase.
You're recommending what would be noticed as the max.
A maximum scenario.
And I think the staff wants the ability to send those notices, and it sounds like the time is of the essence to get the authority to send the notices, and if the body that has to authorize the sending of the notices is City Council, and then October 11th, they might be sitting there saying, well, did the Commission recommend issuance of the notices? I think we should be debating it the next time we meet as a Commission, so that that notice trigger isn't a kind of an opportunity to fritter away more time. I think if you're trying to move this forward, let's just get everybody's complaints out in the open, let the public come and talk to us on the Commission at our next meeting, and then people will not have this feeling fairly or unfairly. Sometimes people feel that by the time something gets to the Council, it hasn't, there hasn't been enough of an opportunity for input, and our Commission is that opportunity for input. So I think we should agendize for our next Commission meeting, the subject, the action recommendation to Council concerning the 218 notices, so the public knows that we're going to have that in front of us. The public comes and talks, sends us input, so be it. I'm all for hearing the input.
And usually, that's the preference of the Glenn Warren Power Commission. I mean, I've been here four years already. I was around when the 2007 presentation that Mr. Cavunas gave back then. And so that's always been our preference, is to have those type of agendized items be brought back to the Commission before it goes to City Council for a recommendation, whether that be different options, but I think that's always been a preference, to have the public's more time to voice their opinion before it goes to Council. And so if we can get that agendized for next meeting, I would agree with Commissioner Dentler completely, that we should have those options as recommendations to the City Council. And I think it does carry a little more weight when it gets presented to the City Council, that the Commission recommended this option versus the other option, and so that would expedite your request for Prop. 218 notice if it comes from this Commission first.
We can do that.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. We can put on the forecast later.
We can do it, yep.
And I'd like to make sure the Commission keeps in mind, you know, we were trying to, as staff, trying to balance both the process and the substance. The substance is not the notice, that's just the form that we have to go through. Actually, in 2007, we didn't ask for City Council approval to issue the notice. We just issued the notice and got into the discussion of the substance, of what is it that's being proposed, and had discussions here about the needs of the utility and what we plan to do with the money. Going to a joint study session, as we did before, added an extra layer of work for us in order to get the notice out, which, you know, it's, you know, we think, we agree that it adds to the notice that the public actually gets, and the opportunities the public gets to discuss it. And the two processes, the two elements, the process and the substance, actually have to come together at some point without wearing staff down just in order to get the process out. I mean, our real work begins after the notice is out.
Sure, but you can't put the genie back in the bottle, and, you know, we, for me, as a Commissioner, especially as a new one, it was not comfortable to sit up in a long session jointly with City Council, and only at the tail end after one of us had left and the hour was very late, and only in the last seconds of the meeting were we then, it seemed to me, kind of suddenly out of nowhere, asked, can we send the notices now? And I felt uncomfortable with that, because the entire presentation and nothing on the agenda notified us as Commissioners or City Council members that that was to be an action item. And I know you don't maybe need the authority of the Commission to send out the notices or even the City Council possibly, but now that you've already had one meeting, asking the City Council, can we send out the notices? You know, you've got to take the path that you've started out walking down.
We will agendize it. Let's make sure we talk about it in the forecast.
Later.
So it'll be clear as to where it sits, okay?
Right.
We'll do that.
I just want to comment on a couple of things. Thank you, Peter, thank you, Glenn, for providing all this helpful information and your effort, and the effort of all the staff. As my email indicated. As my email indicated, I know it's really difficult trying to balance everything in these economic times. I appreciate your effort. While I completely agree that we need additional funding to upgrade our infrastructure and, you know, carry on with all of our projects, my commissioners, colleagues, and also the council members raised some very good questions. So, and I think as soon as we can get those answers, then we'll be able to make some more informed decisions. Okay, so are there any other comments, or we can go to the next item?
I think that's it.
That's it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is mine, so I think...
Item 4B.
That's why you're not moving.
Presentation. Not a protest.
You can't get rid of them.
Not leaving until you get your water ready. At the deal?
Item 4B, presentation of electronic operations manual, Priti Kabunas.
This is a presentation for your information. I'm going to invite, in a second, I'm going to invite Mr. Leighton Fong, who was the project manager for this, and he will give you a description of the project that we took on. And this is a project, we're very happy with the way it turned out in the water department. It has a lot to do with the way we manage the utility, it has a lot to do with how we manage on a day-to-day basis, but also on a long-term basis. It has to do with how much information we're able to retain in the organization, how we're able to train new people coming in, and how we're able to capture knowledge. It goes to succession planning, it goes to asset management, it goes to everything that adds value to the utility on a long-term basis. Mr. Leighton Fong, Leighton, if you can come up, was the project manager for this. He managed to coordinate a lot of different people to make this happen. You'll see a brief presentation, but if you think about the scope of this, you'll appreciate the hard work that Leighton did. So with that, Leighton, please.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Leighton Fong, civil engineer. Just to give you a quick description of our electronic operations manual, little description, just a red button. Basically, it puts all our, takes advantage of all the storage capacities that present day computers have. We can put drawings, photos, operating manuals. It gives staff access throughout the network, so the field and the engineering office has equal access to all the information, and it's designed to be just like surfing the internet. So everybody's familiar with the format, just click and point, so no training, no special classes needed. Thank you, go backwards. Oh, oh. Okay, why do we need an EOM? Well, this is like, this is where we have to dig for information. It could be in the project manager's office, in one of our many shelves, or in our filing cabinets for drawings or project files. So just assembling information that you need to do a project or to answer a question is very time-consuming, and sometimes you give up, you just don't know where to look. Especially some of these facilities are very old, the project managers have retired or moved on to another city, and sometimes it's, you know, their box of materials in a storage shed somewhere. So putting it all online is really helpful to move a project up. How was it created? We issued a contract after RFP was awarded to Camp Dr. S. McKee in September 2010, about a year ago. It was a $400,000 contract. Kickoff meeting was in November. July 1, they delivered the EOM. We began training in August, and they have a one-year maintenance contract, so about every other week, we have training sessions to go over questions that our staff has and learn how to update and add new information to the manual on our own. It was also used using non-proprietary software. It's just Dreamweaver, basic web design, so we don't have to pay any fees, and we don't have to do any expensive software that might be outdated. So it's just like using the internet. The data collected was, compiling scanned drawings, the consultants visited the sites, interviewed our operators, understood how the systems are operating, so that when they created the structure, it made sense to our operators, and it was correct. Also, they identified missing data that, or missing links that were not part of our data, and they were able to kind of fill in the blanks. Training, their editors or anybody that has access, which is, all our employees have access to the EOM, and any one of them can edit. They just copy the page that has an error onto Word, and they use track changes. The reviewer is their supervisor, so that there's some quality control, that they don't just start changing back and forth. Publisher are the ones that have a little bit of training, where they can actually push now the revised pages onto the EOM, okay? So that's already ongoing, and I just talked to some of the operators now, that they've assigned certain stations to each operator to review, and then start making a list of corrections. So there's a formal review process ongoing now. Maintenance period is one year, that's already begun, and like I said, there's regular meetings, and there's also on-call. The people that worked on this, CDM, are all over the nation, so we kind of do this video conference. The main writers in Florida, and the people that did the plant check were in South Carolina and Texas, so internet's the way to go. Here's an example of what the EOM looks like. On the left is a table of content that has all our facilities, and then the main page is in the center. So we worked, spent a little time going, the best way to organize, so you could see like our water supply, and then storage facilities, and below that is pump station. So I highlighted Allen Tank, and so the operator would just move his mouse to Allen Tank, if that's what he's looking for, then would bring up a picture and a description of the tank, then as you scroll down, there's more description. It's hypertext, so if you see like list of drawings, you see a drawing that the title is what you're interested in, you just click that, just like on the internet, and it brings up the drawing. So they can browse through drawings to find the right one. Right now, they have to drive to engineering, go through all these files, and then, if they're lucky, they'll find what they're looking for. The benefits are quick access to the information, the data is current, a lot of times, people will find what they look and find out, oh, this is the old pump station, and be using old data. It provides cross-training, you're able to see projects that you haven't worked on, that other people have worked on, it's all visible to you, so that you, you know, you don't stumble on some unforeseen problems down the line. You can see everything at once, and having more information is always better for analysis. You can make, all the efficiencies of all the pumps are done, and we update those every other year, so you can get the latest efficiencies. So basically, that's our EOM manual. Any questions?
Yeah? Comment and a question. First of all, I know it's hard to get excited about these things, but this is exciting to see this progress, and I wanted to commend you for taking these steps. It's always easy to do nothing and leave things the way they used to be done, but this is really good, this is really good for us and our utility in terms of modernizing how we approach these things. I commend you for what I am sure was endless hours of very tedious work, so thank you for that. My question to you is, is as we modernize these things and as we centralize them in terms of databases and bringing them online, what are the steps that are taken to secure this information from cybersecurity perspective, to make sure that these sorts of critical asset information is not accessible to people who should not have access to them?
Okay, thank you for the good work, kind words, and the EOM is not on the internet, it's in the city's Intranet, so it's not accessible to the public, only the, there's this server that's in third floor, and it's only accessible on the GWP domain, so it's kind of limited. There's thoughts of putting it out in the field, and the thought now is putting it on a flash drive. We'll see how cumbersome that is, because it's growing kind of fast.
So your answer does not give me greater comfort, it actually gives me greater cause for concern. So that's exactly why I'm asking the question. When you have this sort of information on flash drives or where it can walk, it can potentially be accessed by other people. So again, I'll restate the question, which is, how are we ensuring from a cybersecurity perspective that this information is not available to the public? I assume, you know, anything that's on city servers are secured through, as a city IT asset, but I would be very concerned if it moves beyond that in terms of any mobile type of devices.
Right, yeah. So we haven't implemented the flash drive, and that was always the major concern. So one thought was put it with their car keys, so they don't lose both of them at the same time, but we haven't really worked on that. The main concern now is keeping it updated. When you have these loose flash drives, it's, yeah, it's a little bit uncontrollable. So that's a good concern. We'll certainly have to think of a way to keep that data secure.
I have a comment and a question as well. Congratulations. I remember 20-some years ago, I was pulling drawings out of a vault, a central vault, okay? This technology was not available then. Congratulations, this is great. My question is, right here says, "Ongoing maintenance expires June 2012." What kind of maintenance does it require, first of all, and what is going to happen after June 2012?
Yeah, mainly it's training, that over the year, our staff is learning to do the updates themselves, and at the beginning, they'll help us step by step, but over the time, you know, we'll only ask them the things that are difficult or we don't understand. So within the year, we think we'll cover everything that could happen, that our staff could be able to update, upload. Like I said, it's generic web-based design, so there's nothing proprietary, and then we have staff in IT that are also very familiar with those applications. So it's, we don't see a problem with, you know, after the year, terminating the contract. It's mainly a service that they have, we can call them up, and they know exactly what we're dealing with, so they can answer those questions quickly, but it's not an issue that we're too concerned about, you know, when that expires.
Even after June 2012?
Right.
So the $400,000 is going to go all the way up till then? It's going to last all the way up to June 2012?
Yeah, it's, the maintenance is not that expensive. It was having those engineers on the field, like two weeks at a time, they had like three, and then, you know, they're out of town, so it's all the transportation and housing. That was the bulk of the expense. Most of the training is, you know, wireless, so just a couple of hours a month.
Okay, great, thanks.
Oh, quick question. I'm just curious about this project, because the initial, my initial response when I saw it on agenda item was, it sounded like something that the airline pilots were switching from operations manual to iPad, and so this is, sounds very similar, right? Because you're putting information in electronic format, so that people can just easily access it and then be more efficient. Is there a cost savings involved with this? Has the city determined that this is a worthwhile project to pursue because of the cost savings? And what are those?
I think it'd be hard to quantify, it's just more efficient and saves time, but...
There is cost savings, though, and, you know, we've looked at it from a very high-level position, but anytime we digitize anything that we're doing, for example, we're looking now, one of the things we're going to bring back to you is the possibility of using iPads for, in place of this, meetings. It's the same issue. When we did the cost benefit, it's overwhelming, when you see how much money you save by not having to have, you know, manual records, and that's what we're doing. So we're getting away from that, so there's a significant cost saving. Don't have it here, but we absolutely can provide it.
Yeah, it'd be good for the public to know that that's part of the cost-cutting measures that the utility is implementing, and we're not just spending money, we're trying to reduce money. It's good stuff. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Thank you. Item 4D, I'm sorry, 4C, emergency preparedness, Ned Bassin.
President Chan, members of the commission, I'm Ned Bassin. I'm the Assistant General Manager, Customer and Support Services, and do you have, the request for this emergency preparedness presentation had its genesis after the earthquake and tsunami in Japan, so the question was, how are we prepared for disaster? First, let me go over a few definitions. Emergency Operations Center, or EOC, is a location where centralized emergency management can be performed. The city has an emergency operations center that's always available and can be put in use in a very short, on very short notice. Department Operations Center, or DOC, is similar to EOC, but it's for a particular discipline or department. So if it was something that was just self-contained for the department for water and power, it might, it would be classified as a DOC, the EOC would not necessarily be in use. Mutual aid agreement is an agreement with outside entities to provide or receive assistance during an emergency, and it establishes various conditions, including that usually the cost is at cost and for repayment. It can take many forms, field response, materials, equipment, and fleet. GWP has a number of mutual aid agreements. This does not include the aid agreements that the city has, but we have agreements with, for field response, with six local municipal utilities, and then some which are both state and national organizations. We also have three local city warehouses that can supply us with materials if we run out, or equipment, along with MWD and a state agency for response, and then mechanical maintenance, which is with four entities. It was under a mutual aid agreement that the electrical, our electrical section sent personnel up to PG&E last spring when they had some high winds that downed power lines, and it was pretty widespread, and they called for assistance, and we sent up at least one or two crews. Continuing with the definitions, GWP's emergency plan is a written preparedness plan, which we have. It's the basic plan, which covers or includes such things as the organization, primary and support missions, secondary operating procedures for specific events, that's standard operating procedures for specific events, and operational information. Now I'll take, talk briefly about the city, because we are part of the city, and disaster response will be a city-based function. GWP's response is, with the, the city's response to a disaster would be, a city's organizational response would be SIMS. response would be SIMS. SIMS is a standard emergency management system, and it's in the California Code of Regulations, and it standardizes the response and the protocols that would be followed by all the cities, the counties, and the states, so that when they talk to each other, they're all using the same vocabulary and have the same organization. The SIMS dictates a Director of Emergency Services in the city of Glendale, that would be the city manager, and under that would be four different parts of the organization, one for operations, planning and intelligence, logistics, and finance and administration. Emergencies are also categorized by a level, and the level dictates the organizational response. For example, a minor, moderate event is one which is called, where local resources are adequate and available. That would be called a Level 1 response. This is what, because it says local emergency is proclaimed, that would be proclaimed by the city manager with the approval of the council. And so this is a fairly large event, but it is still small enough where it is decentralized with coordination and direction, which means that the highest levels of the city are involved and informed, but the actual response and control and direction on the urgency would be from an unseen command post. Before I go on to the other levels, I just want to point out that GWP's normal operation is repair and response to small events. We respond to the events, we're on call 24/7 with a response, and we make repairs in the field. So we have the personnel, the familiarity, and the equipment to respond to various events and incidents, and these are actually the pieces that make up a response to a disaster. Level 2 is moderate to severe. It's where local resources are not adequate, and this is where the mutual aid agreements would come into effect. If the city declares it as an emergency, the centralized, they would have centralized coordination and decentralized direction. And a Level 3 is a major or local regional disaster. Local resources are overwhelmed, and there would be extensive state or federal resources would be required, and there it would be centralized coordination and centralized For GWP, our primary responsibility is the utilities. And what I'm covering now is what is in our emergency preparedness manual. We also support the city with other functions, situational analysis, emergency management, public information, fire and rescue, that would be administrative-type help, public health, rescue, that would be in the field, construction engineering, recovery. Recovery in this sense means helping bring the city back to normal operations. In the definitions, I mentioned the GWP emergency plan, and it covers additional specifics. It prioritizes our various elements of our work, from most, highest priority, which is most critical, to lowest priority, which is least critical. An example, which might seem very obvious, but it is the kind of thing that's covered in the manual, is that repair or restoration would be considered the most critical, whereas maintenance would be considered the least critical. And so a group that would normally be handling maintenance would understand that they could be dispatched or would be dispatched to handle repairs and restoration. Plan activation is also described, and it's automatic if the EOC is activated and there's a declaration of local emergency. Or it can be for GWP activated by authorized GWP managers, and that would be a response to just a GWP need. That could just be, it's hard to think of something that would cover GWP extensively and not cover the rest of the city, but an example of a number of lines down could require activation of the plan. The emergency plan does spell out the organization. It has procedures for call-out, for reporting locations, assembly areas, record locations, emergency supplies, and emergency procedures of specific types of events. So it covers an earthquake, for example, and it gives guidelines as to what needs to be looked for and how to respond. In summary, everyday responses by GWP is part of the preparation for our response under disaster. If there is a disaster, the main thing would not be the effect of our people in the field, it would be our management and support of the rest of the city's operations. We have mutual aid agreements, we have the notification call-out, recall of personnel procedures, we have the organization that will fit into what the city does and what the state does. We have assembly and evacuation drills that get performed, we do tabletop exercises. So in summary, GWP is part of the city's response. It utilizes the SIMS organization. Our primary responsibility is utilities, but we have, and we have mutual aid agreements. We can support other city departments, and we can be supported by other city departments as well. That's what I have.
I have a couple of questions. You mentioned, in terms of the levels of response needed, who makes that determination in terms of what level we're at?
That is made by the city manager and with the approval of the city council.
And with regard to the drills?
Yes.
How often are those conducted, and how deep in the organization do the drills go?
Many of the tabletop exercises is done with managers and supervisors. The, some of the drills, for example, evacuation drills is done with everybody. We've had them here in Perkins, which is our office. We've had them at the EOC, and I think they're done every, once a year, but they might be done more often than that. Some of the other exercises, we do in joint with the rest of the city and/or the state when they have exercises. And some of that is done with just a few of our people, because they're the primary responders at the EOC or large primary response. We had quite a few participants, I think it was two years ago, if you might remember, the great quake shakeup.
Shakeout.
And so we responded, or we participated extensively in that. There's been, I think, one more since then, which was at a much lower level, and we just had a few people participating with the Fire and Police Department.
And then a final question, I'll let my colleagues speak. In terms of risk assessment, has GWP done a more formal risk assessment and scenario planning to see where the worst-case vulnerabilities are within our system?
There is an extensive risk assessment that's been done by the city for the city, and that is on the city's website. I know that the water system has done some analysis to look at the various areas that their equipment could fail and what the cause would be. With the electrical, I'm not sure to what extent that has been done.
A similar assessment has been done on the electric side to prioritize those highest risk down to lowest, so.
Is there any impact between, or I should say, intersection between those places where there's vulnerability and the actual infrastructure projects that you're proposing, where we need additional funding for?
Let me see if I understand that.
Has it been, in other words, have any of the current infrastructure projects that are capital projects, are they in any way related to vulnerabilities identified through the risk assessment?
To risk?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, they are.
Following up on that, that's a great question. I think that might be an important piece of information to get to the council and to members of the public. So this is a good information item just for us for today and gives us an overview, but I think that's an excellent way to help people connect the dots between deferred maintenance, capital improvement projects, risk. We have, you know, a lot of members of the public rightfully concerned about natural disasters, terrorism, et cetera, et cetera. So that's a helpful way to connect some dots. My question is about the mutual aid agreements, and it might be that Mr. Cavounis might know the answer or be able to give me the information I'm seeking. I've always wondered about the mutual aid agreements in the event of a massive water emergency, so leaving power to one side, because on the slide for mutual aid agreements, I see that most of our aid agreements that would bring forth responses, helpful responders from other municipalities and organizations are from right here in California. And then as for getting help from other places in the nation, that, if I'm understanding the presentation correctly, that's limited to just the power side. So my question is, are there sources of external assistance for us in Glendale from outside the California region in the event of a massive water failure, say in the Delta infrastructure, or in an earthquake, you know, maximum earthquake scenario, were to strike MWD? Does it have kind of a backup aid, set of aid agreements, so that, is MWD our kind of insurer of first resort for aid responders? Is my question clear? Can we get responders to come in from other places in the country, or are they all from Burbank, Pasadena, and all the localities that will be similarly affected in a water disaster?
Well, we have a couple of agreements that cover all of California. So if it was Southern California, there are people that could come in from Northern California to help. As far as the rest of the nation, I'm not sure that we, what we might have. The city has various aid agreements as well, and so I'm not sure to what extent that goes outside of California.
But in the event of a massive failure of the Delta, the northern responders are going to be kind of busy. So I was wondering, does Metropolitan act as kind of a?
Asking if they're a conduit for the rest of the nation?
Is that where we would be getting help come in from Arizona, from other states, other nations?
Speaking from experience, and I'll give you my experience, having had quite a bit in this area in other states, if a disaster is that widespread, you generally don't have mutual aid agreements beyond the state border. It's unusual unless it's small state, certainly not in California.
I just saw that we have one for power, on the power side, though.
Right, but it's very, very unusual, and they're very general. What generally happens in a widespread regional emergency is you talk to your neighboring utilities at the time to see exactly what's available, because generally you don't, your mutual aid agreements are structured within a certain range, so that the people can come in within a certain timeframe. So the farther out you get, the less likely you are to have true mutual aid agreements in place, because you're now imposing upon another region which may have the same issue. So what happens is, during an emergency, you use your mutual aid agreements that are in place. Should you need to go beyond that, then you make calls outside of that. That's pretty typical as to how it works.
The only thing I would add to that is that in terms of water, if you mentioned the failure of the Delta, if that were to happen, what we would have here in Southern California, as well as Central California and Northern California, would be a supply problem, not an infrastructure problem. So to deal with that, we would rely on MWD, because they have stored water supplies, and we would rely on a local groundwater wells. So from a supply point of view, a catastrophe in the north doesn't necessarily mean instant disaster, though. Infrastructure point of view, MWD would be our first choice, our first provider of aid, if you will, with all their facilities, all their manufacturing ability. But if it were a local infrastructure-related disaster in Southern California, that would be busy, they'd be busy fixing their stuff along with all the other agencies. So we would be going to, as Mr. Steiger mentioned, we'd be going to agencies up north, for example, East Bay Mud, which is a very sizable operation as well, and look to them for help. Burbank, Pasadena would all be in the same position that we're in. So at the same time, we try, at least for water, we try to keep some supplies on hand that would keep us from being desperate from day one. Part of our manual that Mr. Bassin mentioned includes a list of supplies to keep on hand, locations where we keep them, and we have a person who is responsible for taking inventory. Try to be as self-sufficient as we can at the beginning of it.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So does every employee in GWP know whether he or she is considered critical or not critical? And do they have access to this plan?
They have access to the plan. The general employees are under the plan to, they're at work, they report, depending upon the nature of the event, they either stay at work or they report to a station where they're supposed to go for evacuation, and at that point, they're given directions as to what their needs might be. If they're not at work and they're at home, they're to listen to the news and see whether or not they need to come in. If it's regular working hours, say the event happens on Sunday and Monday, they're to report to work. Unless they physically cannot get to work, either because of injury, illness, or if it's so bad that the roads are closed, then they are to report to a local state or city agency to provide their services. For critical employees, critical employees are on call, they're, as responders, and they are aware that they need to come in if necessary.
And who are the managers that are authorized to activate?
The managers that are authorized is Glenn Steiger, and then the AGM of Electrical, and a number of the field managers in Electrical, because this is primarily considered, it would likely be an Electrical event.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question to that. I don't know if you know this off the top of your head, but what percentage of GWP employees live in Glendale versus being further away from the city for this sort of purpose?
I don't know.
I'd be curious to know how many, because in a serious disaster, getting to the city would be problematic. And so if that percentage is something very high, such as 95%, then we've got a whole different problem, probably. If we could get an answer to that, that'd be great, even as a general.
Sure we can, I'm sure we have it.
In that case, we might want to make sure one of the Glendale residents has that flash drive.
Yeah, exactly, like one of us.
Okay, no other questions? Next item, please.
Item 4D, meeting renewable portfolio standard goals, Steve Lenz.
Madam President, members of the Commission, Steve Lenz, Assistant General Manager of Supply for Glendale Water and Power. And today I have just a quick update for you on our renewable portfolio standard goals. And as you recall from the first presentation today, this actually was the first thing listed on the Greener Glendale Plan for Municipal Operations, which was the 33% renewable portfolio standard. In April, the state passed a law regarding renewable portfolio standard. The detailed regulations are still being developed, but it's clear that we're going to have a requirement of to have a requirement of 20% renewable energy for the period 2011 to 2013, 25% by 2016, and then ultimately 33% by 2020. So I've just got one chart for you to look at today, and this is the state of our renewable portfolio standard as it will exist for 2012, which is the next year. And you can see at the top of that pie chart there, the big blue slice that's 22.8%, that is our existing renewable energy for the system. Now, that includes Hoover, which is about 5%. And it's not out of the question, but it's highly unlikely at this point that we're going to be able to count that 5% towards the standard once the detailed regulations are finalized. So that takes us down from 23 to about 18. Up on the upper-left corner there, you can see three wind projects. Those are projects that we developed with Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. They represent 7.2% of available renewable energy, and we can exercise those options at this point at any time if need be. In addition to what's on this chart, we've been developing renewable energy projects with SCAPA for years. We have two that have already been approved by council. One is the La Paz Solar Project, which is out in the desert. It's a huge solar chimney, I guess is the best way to describe it. That represents about 5.3%. And that, if they complete it, should be commercially available in 2014. We just, council just approved some research and development work in the Imperial Valley of some geothermal on land that's owned by DWP and the Imperial Irrigation District. And that could be anywhere between 1.4% and 4.2%. Probably won't be done until 2015. We continue to evaluate a whole other long list of projects that SCAP has received proposals for. In conclusion, it's clear that we are on track for meeting our requirements, and we continue to try to optimize how we scale these projects into our system as those requirements approach. And that's the quick update. Be glad to answer any questions.
Couple of questions, yeah. First of all, how does accessing the three projects on the top left affect the budget? Because I would understand that the reason we're not accessing these now, it makes more sense to sell it or derive some revenue from it. And given we have certain budgetary needs over the past next couple of years, does accessing those top three projects affect us in any way and how much?
Well, the way our tariff is set up, we have a fuel adjustment charge. All of those projects have been developed, and those costs for development have been paid. So if we access those options, what will happen is that energy will come into our system, and it will flow right through the fuel adjustment charge to our customers.
It won't affect our customers?
It will impact the fuel adjustment charge, potentially. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts in that fuel adjustment charge, and I'm sure some of you are aware, gas prices have been trending down. And so our forecasts were higher than gas prices are coming in, so it may be that that energy scales in while gas is going down, that energy price is going down. So we can't say for certain whether or not there'll be an increase or not, depending on when that energy gets scaled into the system.
Okay. That's to the customer, but what about to GWP? It's the same thing, then?
Same thing. In terms of our budget, the development costs have been paid for those three projects. And if it comes into the system, it will flow through the fuel adjustment charge, and there'll be no additional budgetary impact to water and power.
Where are the coal resources coming from?
We have two projects. One is the Intermountain Power Project out in Utah. The other is San Juan, which is out near the Four Corners. And we are continually evaluating options for what to do with those projects when those contracts expire. And earlier, if need be, I think IPP is 2027, and San Juan, I think it's 2023. So we've got active task forces on both of those projects, including all the participants, Los Angeles Department of Water and Power being the biggest one on IPP, looking at, you know, what do we do in 2027? We are not going to be able to keep coal past the current termination of that contract because of state law related to making improvements that last longer than five years. So we're looking at various options, including renewables and repowering with gas. At this point, Glendale Water and Power is in very good shape because our total, you'll see here on this pie chart on the right there, our total coal percentage is only 32%, which is among the lowest of the SCAPA participants in Southern California. Some of them are as high as 60, 70%. They've got real problems on their hands.
So if I'm understanding correctly, is your intent by the time these contracts end to be off of coal completely? Or do you anticipate you will still have a percentage of coal?
It's hard to say at this point. We for sure are going to have to do something with IPP, at least with one of the two major units. That could include turning one of the units into a gas plant. I know right now we're facing mandates from the EPA on San Juan that are tentatively requiring us to put SCRs on there, emissions reduction equipment, which would cost the project about $1 billion. And for us, I think that translates into a price increase from about, and these are round figures, $60 to about $64, so about a $4 or $5 increase per megawatt hour. So, I mean, it's fluid, things are changing, and right now, we are scheduled to get allocations for carbon under cap and trade, which is, once again, still being developed, that we believe will cover more than our needs through 2020 for carbon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lenz, for the update. The goals that you mentioned as mandated by legislation, and you mentioned that Glendale was in the contract and negotiation with the solar tower, is that what you're talking about, the solar tower, to bring in more solar energy?
Yes.
So given that and all the other competition from other utilities, do you anticipate a price increase potentially to meet these goals? Or are they going to be down to where regular natural gas prices for electric generation would be?
That's another moving target. Back when we started a few years ago scaling in some of this renewable, our best estimate was potentially a 10% price increase due to the scaling in 33% renewable power. However, as I mentioned, gas prices have been going down. And once again, this all comes in through the fuel adjustment charge. And so far, for the last three years, we've scaled in quite a bit of renewable energy and haven't had to raise that. In fact, we did have actually a 9% decrease in our rate, you know, not too long ago.
Yeah, but do you see the renewable energy going down to where it's more competitive with natural gas generation? Or are you seeing still a price increase because of competition?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. Ultimately, I believe the renewables are going to become more competitive. We're already seeing a pretty aggressive price mover, price movement to the downside on solar as that technology increases. This La Paz project was very competitive. It was as competitive as some of the wind, and wind has been kind of the cheapest of all the renewable resources, which is why we got the options. But all of the prices of solar, at least, are trending down. And, you know, we believe as we get technological breakthroughs, that those prices will trend down, and ultimately, gas prices someday will trend back up. And I think at some point, they'll be on par with each other.
So do we still anticipate meeting that 33% target by 2020, regardless of what been in production? And regardless of what competition from other utilities trying to get those renewable energy as well, we still can meet that target?
Yes. I mean, as I indicated, we've got about 18 in our pocket plus eight. That's, you know, 26 plus, we've got plenty in the pipe. We're not going to have any problem at all. We're way ahead of the game at this point.
Yeah, just to emphasize that, we are far ahead. Actually, we could actually back off right now, wait a couple of years just to see what market forces occur, and still be able to meet that with no problem. If you add the 7.2, even if you take away Hoover, you add the 7.2, and you add La Paz, those alone get us just about to the 33% mark. So we have a lot of options in front of us.
And in addition, one thing I haven't mentioned, which is being ironed out in the detailed regulations, is that you can just buy renewable energy credits as well to fill that mandate for up to about, at this point, 25% of your needs.
So in the future, I'm sorry, last question, regarding the mandates in that we're ahead of the game, is there potential to sell some renewable credits like we did with Pasadena so that if there's a budget issue next year, we can make up the revenue difference with additional renewable energy credits?
There is, and in fact, that's part of the reason we put these options in place, because it might be that, you know, depending on market movement, that it makes sense for us to opt into more wind that we need to sell into the market for that very reason.
My question is about coal. Is my understanding correct that there's no way for Glendale to reduce its reliance on coal before the expiration of the contracts, the two contracts?
You could potentially get out of the contracts. It's all about what that would end up costing our customers.
I understand that. So my question is, is in response to your reply to my colleague about how you and the other agencies that you confer with regarding the resource mix and energy costs, that when you said that you're engaged behind the scenes in a lot of discussion, thought, and analysis about coal, I'd like to have some of that become more transparent to the commission over time. There's a lot of public advocacy going on right now concerning coal, and there are increasing voices calling for cities to reduce reliance on coal. In Pasadena, this is becoming quite a hot topic. And before too long, I think that those voices will reach our city, if they haven't already. And I've already gotten some emails from anti-coal advocates just by being appointed to this commission. So it's something that I want to be proactive about, that even though we have these long contract periods, and I will be around when those contracts expire, but I think that the public should perceive more transparency than just the staff behind the scenes and in conferences with other agencies is trying to figure out what to do about our coal resource use. I think that that would be a proper subject to agendize once in a while and have it come before the commission.
We can do that. The biggest problem with what's going on with those plans is cap and trade, and we don't have cap and trade regulations. So you can't...
I understand that.
You can't make a decision until we have some of those in place. And that, you know, could be six to 18 months, depending on, you know, how things go.
I'm just saying someday.
Sure.
When it's appropriate and when there's something meaningful that staff can tell us, I think that's something the public is interested in. And, you know, sooner or later, it's going to come to our city council, and they're going to say, well, gee, isn't that something that the commission should have looked into? So while I'm sitting up here, I'd like to learn more about coal, even though I understand you're locked into contracts. But it's an opportunity for public education.
Sure, we'd be glad to. As soon as we have some answers, we'll be glad to bring them to you.
Thanks.
One final question, hopefully. One thing I didn't hear, or if this has been considered at all, have you guys looked into the Shaw Canyon and any sort of a waste of energy project? And is that even feasible or competitive compared to some of your other products?
Yeah, actually, Public Works is separately doing research and looking at a waste of energy project that would include actually burning gas. Some of you may know, that will take a law change because right now, you can't do it under existing law. In addition to that, we, Glendale Water and Power, is using our models to look at asset optimization and try to decide what's the best way or the optimal way to burn the gas that we're now getting from the plant. Right now, we burn them in very inefficient units that were built in the 1950s, and we are looking at another way to do that, which would be more efficient.
I'm not talking about the methane gasification. I'm talking about the actual waste or the dump that we have in Shaw Canyon, and that as a project in and of itself.
As I indicated, Public Works is looking at that. Public Works runs the trash portion of services at the city. And they actually just completed an RFP, and they've got a firm looking at possibilities for a project there, which might include taking extra trash in and not even putting it in the landfill and burning it, and potentially even mining the trash that's already there to burn it to make energy. So they're evaluating options, and that's in process.
Is that a Public Works issue? It doesn't kind of...
It's both, but Public Works is taking the lead on it right now, yes.
And we're trying to coordinate with them because depending on what that site or project looks like, there could be synergies with what we're doing with the existing methane that's coming out of the ground.
Absolutely.
They may, you know, work together. So we're working with them on that as they move through that process.
Because that could be potentially a fairly large renewable source, which you can hold or sell in the future.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. The wind projects, the 7.2% that we have access to, when do those contracts expire?
They are all ownership projects. We have an option to opt back in for various terms, three to four years from the commercial operation date. So I'll say ballpark for all three of them, we have about three years from now to opt in. And that can be triggered by a change in the law that increases our requirements, which just happened. So on 60 days' notice, we can opt into any of these three. Once you're in, it is ownership. You own the project. And after the bonds are paid off in 20 years, beyond that, you're paying O and M, and the cost goes down even further.
So there will be a financial impact to us at that point when we opt in?
Well, once again, it's the same answer as I gave you earlier. Ultimately, the cost of that energy will flow through the fuel adjustment charge.
Right. Okay. Another question I have is, or actually, I want additional information on your solar program. I understand the solar program was terminated for a while, but then is back on, right?
Correct, correct. The, it was on hold, actually, until we had run out of funding to fund the incentives. So we have reconfigured the incentives, so they're about half of what they used to be, but the price of solar has come way down. So we're still seeing a very healthy solar installation in Glendale. That has not changed.
That's great. And we still have funding? So it's still open?
We do.
Right? Okay, great. And how about feed-in tariff? Have we considered that at all?
Well, it's something that's on the horizon. We have not, that's not a priority for us at the moment, but it will be at some point, yes.
I know state agencies are thinking about it, but I don't know what the current status is.
Right. I mean, with so much sun in our city, it's a shame that we don't have more solar. I'm a huge advocate. I have a solar system on one of my homes, and it's working great, and I definitely would like to see more participation in that program.
I'm just curious, the feed-in tariffs, is that not the same thing as the net energy metering? If you generate more solar power, doesn't it get to the grid?
It takes the place of net metering. It basically provides an actual cost, a fixed cost, to purchase the energy rather than have net metering. So it's a bit different than that, but it's, the idea is the same.
But the city has the net metering tariff, doesn't it?
We do.
Right, but it's net, the feed-in tariffs typically are extremely high rates for folks to feed into the system, like they have in Germany, something like 50 cents per kilowatt hour. And it gives a great deal of incentive for people to actually make money by selling their solar into the system. It ends up costing the utility and the customers more money because you're paying so much typically for that rate for the feed-in tariff.
Thanks for the clarification, because I thought the city is doing something with the excess solar energy that gets into the grid if the customer's not using the full amount. So we have something in place for that.
We do.
We do, but it's not, we're not paying them more than the rate that we pay.
Correct.
Yeah, it stays as a credit in your bank.
Our cost is for that credit.
Right.
Seems fair. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you so much. Next item, please.
One slide, huh? Item 4E.
Happens when he brings 10.
Item 4E, smart grid update. Ned Bassin.
Ned, how many slides do you have?
Ned brings 10, but he gets through it in two minutes.
I cannot get it down to one slide. This is the smart grid project update. This is the smart grid project update. We had an interesting last few weeks since the time that you had your last regularly scheduled meeting. We were visited by the Department of Energy and the California Energy Commission. Merrill Smith, who's the program manager for the Department of Energy, came looking after her $20 million grant. And she brought with her some very knowledgeable specialists, including a subject matter and cybersecurity specialist. And we had a avatar beaming from the California Energy Commission checking on his $1 million grant to us. The visit was basically a meeting that lasted the full day. We gave them a project overview, organization of our, and governance of our projects. We reviewed the budget and showed them that we were on budget for our project. We explained the risks and benefits that we saw at the beginning of this project and how things have so far been going. We talked about IT infrastructure and cybersecurity. There was a significant portion of this presentation was by the city's ISD department, who has been helping us greatly under this project. We covered customer engagement, including plans for our digital frame, which we're having a pilot program now, and I'll talk about in a minute. And we reviewed some of the success stories, including our water leak detection and the synergies that we're discovering and building on with other city departments. I thought, all in all, it went very, very well. We also had a final meter installation event. It was at the Glendale City College. It marked the milestone of our last meter installation. And it also brought into perspective or brought around the fact that we were working with the Glendale City College and the Verdugo Workforce Investment Board, also with the Department of Energy Investment, in a partnership for the academy, workforce academy, where they've done training and prepared people for the work in the electrical industry. The person who installed this last meter went through the academy. He had worked for our contractor, and he's now working for GWP. We began our in-home display pilot. We have done the vendor selection, and contracting is complete. We, there was an article in the newspaper about two weeks ago about this frame. I think it was following our commission meeting. And we've had about 200 people, customers, call up saying they'd like to be part of the pilot program. Phase one of the pilot is underway. For phase one, we planned five installations. So, you can see there's quite a bit of interest in this. We are doing, starting the phase one. That is, is just in its early stages. But what we want to do is make sure that what we end up providing to our customers has been tested and is working well. And so, we're doing this in a phased approach. The next approach would be phase two, depending upon how well and how quickly we're satisfied under phase one. And that has been scheduled for 45 frames. We are keeping the people that are on the 200 list, on the list, and they will be getting a frame at some point in time. Another thing that has occurred over the intervening few weeks is there was a brief article in The Economist that deals with a subject where every so often, we have somebody asking about the effects of radio frequency. And I'll just quote the first two sentences from the Economist article. "Concerns about the danger posed to human health by radio waves are misplaced and increasingly irrelevant. Use of phones while driving is far more likely to cause harm." And I think that helps put things in perspective, that there are a lot of things to worry about. This is a slide which we flew because we have to. It's basically, the Department of Energy says that if we give a presentation, we are to acknowledge that they're help-funded, but they have no responsibility for the results. And...
They must not require a certain font size.
Why, it's coming from the federal government.
That's the fine print. You're right. And we can be found on Twitter, Facebook, and on the internet. That's it.
Good question. The meeting with the DOE and the State of California Energy Commission, did they raise any major issues? Or were there any concerns that either we should know about or that you're taking into consideration? Or were we pretty much on the dot with everything?
Our presentation and the discussions went very well. They, at the end, did indicate that they thought things were going very well for us. They did not raise any significant issues. And in fact, the Department of Energy said that this might be a good project to follow up on for something as a display to the rest of the country.
Excellent job. I have a question. I just want to congratulate the GWP staff again for the final meter installation and this great event that you guys put together. And the only thing that struck me afterwards was reading the newspaper article about it. I'm not sure you've seen the Glendale News Press article. And on there, they have the vote, you know, if whatever the vote was to, if you'd like to have that smart meter installed, yes and no. And it surprised me that majority of the people now says no. And it wasn't just a few people. It was, I don't know, even a few hundreds of people who actually voted. I mean, is that something to reconsider and what the impact that would be?
Well, let me try to put something in perspective. When the article appeared in the paper about the frame, within a couple of days, we were well over 100 people. And we're up nearly 200 now. And we still have people contacting us, saying that they would like to be part of the pilot.
Yeah, that's a good article on that. Yeah.
The number of people that have called concerning smart meters, radio frequency, is well under 100.
And let me tell you a step further. We conduct surveys, independent surveys outside of what the Glendale News Press does, not only for customer service, but we do oversamples now for smart grid, for this very, very thing, to get a sense of where people are. A, to test what their awareness is, and B, to test their acceptance and so on. And so far, the acceptance has been extraordinarily high. So, it doesn't match the kinds of things we see in the newspaper.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the public perception, seeing a Glendale News Press, you know, and all these people voting in. And every time I see it, it gets bigger, the no's, it gets bigger than the yes.
Well, I would caution because I think that typical polls in the Glendale News Press don't attract those numbers. So, I wouldn't be surprised if there's a lot of non-Glendale people, activists on this issue that are outside of the city who are weighing in on it as well. Because those sorts of things tend to get circulated a lot.
Yeah, but then you get on the people's psychology that this is a bad thing, and the residents itself feel that they shouldn't be having those people.
I agree, or that there is a real...
That's a really bad, negative thing on utility. Do we have some kind of a comment or reaction to, or at least a clarification like you did with the op-ed piece, Mr. Steiger, to clarify that? And if it gets bigger and bigger?
Well, we continue to do outreach. You know, you'll continue to see additional articles, ads, outreach from us on this because it, first of all, needs to be an education item. Our customers continue to need to be educated on this. And then, we want them to accept it and engage, which is why we're using the frame, for example, because that's an excellent way to engage the system. So, we know that we have a lot of work to do. And of course, there's always going to be some people that have other opinions. But for the moment, we seem to be having more positive, quite a bit more positive, in fact, than the negative.
I agree that some, that there's a public perception problem, though, whether the people voted, you know, outside our boundaries, or, you know, all of that's perfectly plausible. But I know that at least one city council member, you know, spoke very vociferously about this at the last meeting. And every time the news press does something of that nature, I think it does, it stirs up people's concern. So, I think there should be, I can't think of what it should, what it should look like, but I think the staff should continue to educate and explain to the best of your ability. And perhaps more educational and informational opportunities should be made available that would find their way to the council members. Perhaps council members who are interested could be within those first 200 people to get the frames in their homes. Or if not, they individually, maybe they have constituents or relatives who might want them. Maybe Channel 6 could periodically run a, you know, virtual model of what it's like, what it looks like. I mean, there could be ways to educate the public, perhaps. And I think public perception's important. And I'm not, no criticism of staff for everything you have done. But I look forward to seeing the public skepticism about this decrease as education and publicity increases. And I think it, it's got, you can't say too often how the economic times and the hardships that people are facing in their private and family and business lives have got to be generating concerns and skepticism about government and skepticism about technology. It's just, it's just a fact of life, and I think dealing with it proactively is important.
I've said this to individuals in the past at GWP, but I think I'd like to make sure I say it publicly, too, is that I think the quicker we can get to the customer benefit stories and actual live, real examples from real customers, I think that's going to be the key to shifting the tide on this. And I'm convinced that as we get more of the pilot data out, once you get those in place and you actually capture some usage data of how customers are benefiting or using that to save money, hopefully, or at minimum, manage their energy costs, I think it's not only going to be critical to GWP, but I think GWP could lead in terms of the overall smart grid industry and the utilities around the country in demonstrating those benefits. Because I think you're quicker to the end of deployment and quicker to the actual customer programs than probably any other out there. So, I look forward to excavating those stories and bringing them to the attention of the public. I think that's ultimately what will persuade people, is when they see their neighbors actually benefiting. We can sit here and talk about the benefits all we want theoretically. It's until we get to the real thing, that's when people get persuaded.
Agreed.
And we have, we have seen that in a couple of cases where people have called up about their water. And we've found, we can identify that they have a leak. And they, they check and they find the leak. They call us back. And there've been a couple of cases where we say, "Well, it looks like you've decreased the leak, but you haven't resolved it." And they've gone back. They found another leak. They fixed that. And then, they call up and say, "Could you check and see if I have any more leaks?" So, they've, they've turned around from being concerned to where they really see it as a tool.
Well, thank you for all that information. Congratulations with that ceremony last week. With the frames, I have a question on that. What's the plan, like after this pilot program? Are we considering purchasing more, installing it at customers' option? They pay, we pay? Do we have any thinking on that?
We're developing the details of that now. That's part of the reason, to get these frames out and see how people like them and what the effect really is. But yes, we do plan to distribute a great many of these out. It's just how it will work as far as who pays for what and how long, we haven't determined.
So, I hear two numbers, 50, and then I understand 200 people called. Are all those 200 going to eventually get one, or only 50?
No, we intend to eventually have all 200 supplied with frames. It's just that we want to have a small number that have actually been tested out and checked so that we're eliminating any bugs that it may have before we have a whole lot of them, because it could be expensive to try to make a replacement or repair. And the other part is, we don't want people to be dissatisfied with it.
So, every single one of those 200 people will get one?
That's the intent.
Okay.
I have another question. To piggyback on that concept, because I know that utilities like to pilot with a different, diverse group of customers. So, these 200 might be, I'd say, a uniform customer type. Couldn't we make sure that there's diversity in that customer mix so we can test out how it works between different customer classes, people who are low-income, high-income, middle-income, in a bigger home, smaller home, so we can get that survey pilot?
I think as we develop something past the checkout of these meters, we'll have a more definitive plan.
So, we're going to still pursue these 200 customers? Can we know what kind of customer mix they are? If we're going to give these 200 customers the...
These 200 customers are people that have called in because they've either watched a council, a commission meeting, or because they've read about it in the newspaper.
But they not necessarily be very diverse?
No, I do not know. I mean, we can look at the statistics once we start planning what we're doing with it. But I do not know what kind of, whether geographically or economically...
But I mean, that's part of the pilot, is to understand what the purpose of the pilot is. Is it just to have the frame for the wealth to do, or the people can afford them? Or are we ready for pretty much a range of customers?
Right now, the pilot is to make sure that we're happy with the way the frame works, and it provides the information we want to, good way. We are sure that there are people out there, and the 200 expressing interest show that we will not have any trouble providing it. And it is just one element of the way we plan to get information out to customers. They will have other methods to get information out about their energy use as well.
I would like to see at least some low-income customers participate as well so that we can understand what their needs are, if they can actually save some money by being proactive and looking at their usage. So, if you can look at 200 and see if we have any of those customers in there, that would be great.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you so much. Next item.
Item 5, oral communications. Item 6, old business.
I don't think we have any old business to discuss. Next item, please.
Item 7, new business agenda forecast.
We talked about the request to...
Agendize an item?
Yes, uh-huh.
Agendize the potential action item for the public notices.
The green, the greener Glendale plan?
Oh, I'm sorry, the greener.
Well, we have both of those items, and I believe requests from two commissioners, if I'm not mistaken, for both of those items. We do have, I'll note, a fairly full agenda for the next meeting, and I don't know if there are any time restrictions.
I would like to make a recommendation. This is very unusual for what we normally do. But given what we are looking to discuss at the next meeting, those two agenda items that we just mentioned, the Green Glendale, and primarily the water rates, will probably take up all, if not more, than our normal session. So, I would suggest that we agendize those two items, plus there was an agenda item that we moved, which is just the allocation of the water transfer that I think Commissioner Minion, you had asked for. And we can integrate it into that. And I would suggest that we limit it to those three items.
For October.
For October, if you agree.
What time were we thinking of meeting?
Well, our normal meeting is 4 o'clock, unless it's up, it's, you know, it's your decision if you'd like to change that.
Was it difficult for people to show up at 4:30 today? No? I actually might prefer 4:30 myself, if this chamber is available, all the way up to 7:00, 7:30.
Yeah, we would have to check.
The only thing I would caution is that if we are going to get into that level of detail on the water rate design, where you could have more members of the public come. So, you want to, I think, budget enough time to take their input.
Right.
Also, we're asking staff to stay till 7:00 or 7:30. If we, as anticipated, do have public input, I think it would be best, for all concerned, to start at 4, not 4:30.
I think at least for the next one.
Sure. Sure. I'd be open. Yeah.
Yeah, 4:00. I thought it was the other way, that maybe staff was considering, "I move up to 3:00."
Or go the other way?
Yeah, that's what I thought we were talking about.
3:30 is fine with me.
Let's stick with 4:00 then. I vote 4:00. Yeah, we'll just leave it at 4:00. Okay?
So, I'm sorry, just clarif... So, I'm sorry, just for clarification, what is this update, water transfer to Jennifer? I thought that was resolved.
That was a request from Commissioner Armenian, and I believe if I interpret it properly, it's how are we reallocating between water and electric in the city to offset some of that transfer that we're not doing anymore.
Oh, it's like the update from the Will Dance Report on the allocation?
Yeah, yeah, it is that. And it would fit right in with everything else we're talking about with water rates, so it makes sense to include it.
Yeah, I think it's part of the issue that I raised at the joint study session that we don't, kind of, we haven't really talked about, because it was a little bit beyond the purview, but I do think it impacts the water rate issue. And I think when we think about it holistically, it's good that the public gets that perspective on that issue as well.
Okay, sounds good.
I wanted to clarify, so I did put in, you know, that one request in terms of the emergency preparedness issue. I just wanted to clarify what I'd be looking for, just so it's clear. I'm pretty sure that this information has got to exist within the existing risk analyses, but when it comes to the understanding how many GWP employees live within the parameters of the city versus how far out, it would be good to see an analysis of, you know, one mile, five mile, 10 mile, you know, 20 mile, kind of what the concentric circles are, as well as the difference between water and power, so that we kind of see where the issues might be. Again, I have to think that that would be part of any sort of risk assessment, but it would be good, I think, just to get a sense of that.
Anything else? No? Okay. Next item.
Item 8, Adjournment.
A motion, please.
So move, so move to adjourn?
Second. I'll say aye.
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 Motion approved. Adjourned. Thank you.